Council Business Meeting, it is Tuesday, May 15, 2018. It is 9:00 AM. Please join me in the pledge to the flood.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Shipley.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
We'll now open up to public participation. Any member of the public wishes to make public comment on items not on the agenda, you have up to three minutes. Please state your name for the record and your three minutes will begin.
Good morning, Vincent Magory, Palm Coast. This morning I rise to commend two councilmembers, Mr. Nobiel and Councilwoman Shipley. I thank you for your dedication to the city of Palm Coast. Your voting records have been outstanding and you have considered always the benefit to Palm Coast. I might openly add to that I was one of those individuals who asked Mr. Shipley to reconsider running and I did support her and do support her and thank you very much for your participation. You know, I've come up here many times and mentioned the Home Rule Coalition. But let me say this, I know it's in the past, it's 20 years ago, and it's passe. But sometimes I reflect and say to myself, you know what? If we, the Home Rule Coalition, did not have the cohesiveness to work together, stay together, in spite of human frailties involved, where would we be today? How life-altering would it be? Some members of council and charter members have made millions, some hundreds of thousands of dollars, and this is okay, provided the city survives. You know, I was taught a valuable lesson. I walked into a casino one time and asked the gentleman at a crap table how the table was. He started to shake the table, I said, "What the heck is this?" He turned to me and said, "The table is fine, the dice stink." I said, "Okay." I learned that lesson. But here's the analogy, the city of Palm Coast was founded on a strong foundation, it will stay strong. In spite of the split that is occurring now, we will remain strong. And I would just say this, that what do I consider the dice? It is the apathy of the public. You know, someone once said, "People cross fences, people come from different continents, people come through all types of tribut-- trials." But yet Americans won't cross the street to vote. So I believe that is the problem that is occurring and I'm sure we will survive. I thank you very much, Councilman Nobiel and Councilwoman Shipley. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I hope the city's taken aware of what's happening over on Florida Park Drive as far as the construction and the detours. To the amazement, though, is that the traffic grid has not melted down because of it. Traffic's moving quite well. Drivers have found other convenient ways to get to where they're going if they don't like the detours. So remember that when it comes time to take a look at the traffic that flows through Florida Park Drive and help the residents out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Thank you for your comments. We'll move to Agenda Item Number One, which are the minutes, approved city council minutes from May 1, 2018 to May 8, 2018. One is a business meeting, the other is a workshop, a luncheon motion. Second? Been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Two, proclamation, kids recognizing May 19, 2018 as Kids to Park Day. Councilmember Clufus will be presenting. Please, those receiving, step up to the podium.
Whereas May 19, 2018 is the eighth Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit the beautiful parks in Palm Coast around Florida and across the country. Whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's park. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitis, hypertension, and hypercholesterol. And whereas Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. I was doubled up. Sorry, that's actually... Whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. Whereas the city of Palm Coast offers recreation programs such as Playground Pals, Teddy Bear Picnic, Nature Fitness Walks, Summer Camp, and Night Tours. And special events such as Parks and Play Night to encourage families to enjoy our parks. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council in the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that May 19, 2018 is Kids to Parks Day. In Palm Coast to encourage all residents to make time to take their children in their lives to a neighborhood, city, state, or national park. Signed this 15th day of May, 2018, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Melissa Holland.
We love this initiative because it's so important to remind kids to get outside and be active and play. There's so much screen time these days between phones and iPads and their home life and their school life that it's just really important to have that reminder. And what better way to do that than to promote our beautiful parks and trails and amenities that we have right here in Palm Coast? We, as a department, work really hard to support NRPA initiatives and to provide plenty of programming that does allow kids those active youthful opportunities to get out and play. So we're very much in support of this initiative and happy to be a part of it.
Thank you.
All right, do us to hold the proclamation up.
You got it. You got it.
Hold still. Come on in the middle here, squeeze in there.
Hi. Good morning. Hi. Good for you.
Squeeze in there and then follow. Get out of the way.
Do you guys want to hold it? I'll have to...
Stand next to the crow kid, huh?
Yeah.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Too quick.
Agenda Item Number Three is a proclamation recognizing May as Drug Court Month. Councilmember Shipley will be presenting. our criminal justice system. And whereas for more than 25 years, drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, and making communities across the nation safe through more than 3,200 operational drug courts. And whereas drug courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the fight against drug abuse and criminality. And whereas research shows that drug courts are demonstratively effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime and do so at a lower cost than any other justice strategy. And whereas Flagler County Adult Drug Court began in 2006 and 154 people have graduated from the program. And whereas 77% of Flagler County Adult Drug Court graduates have no new felony charges and 85% of graduates have no new drug charges. And whereas the judges, attorneys, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, court personnel, and others dedicated to drug courts and similar programs are healing families in this community. And whereas the city council of the city of Palm Coast recognizes the successful work of the practitioners and drug court participants to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May 18, May 2018 as Drug Court Month and urges all citizens to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug court graduates. Signed this 15th day of May, 2018, City of Palm Coast, Melissa Holland, Mayor.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for recognizing Drug Court. Unfortunately, business is very good. It's the first time in 11 years that we reached, we're actually over capacity in our program. Certainly stressing our budgets, but we certainly try to do the best that we can. Also with me is a member of the Drug Court team, Mike Felbauer, he's also president of the nonprofit foundation, Flagler County Drug Court Foundation Incorporated. Mike, you want to say a couple of words?
Again, thank you from the foundation and from the Drug Court team. The team is working diligently and hard to help our community and help those who want recovery to get back and to become everyday, normal citizens. But as Mr. Gannier has mentioned, we are at capacities, the first time that the team has had a waiting list to get in. Most of that is because of two items. One is budget, one is professional help available to take care of those. We hope to continue to grow and we hope to continue to have the success that we've had. As you all know, recent cuts in budgets from the DOC is going to have a major effect on our community and communities throughout the state since they cut programs in recovery, which is directly affecting those that we work with, particularly those places that we send our participants for residential care for a period of time. Their budgets have been cut by up to 40%. So again, we appreciate what you've done, what the community has done, but it is a time of community awareness. We are blessed in Flagler County and Palm Coast that though we are at capacity and with a waiting list, our numbers are still low, but it is growing.
to these Drug Court graduations.
In the four years that I've been part of the Drug Court team, we've never reached this
And it does make a difference and you see their kids get up and you see their parents
number before and we've never had the people waiting and wanting to get in, to get recovery.
get up and thank us for the, you know, for doing the Drug Court program. And maybe we could contribute something from the city to help their programs, seeing
Thank you.
Thank you.
they're reaching capacity and it does directly affect Palm Coast.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments? Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is a presentation of the Hammock Pickleball Cup Proceeds Donation to the City of Palm Coast.
Good morning, Mayor Holland, councilmembers, and city manager Landon. My name is Walt Hooker. I am a USA pickleball ambassador in Flagler County. I'm here with a few other, looks like many other, pickleball players in the audience to tell you how happy we are about our very successful 2018 Hammock Cup pickleball tournament. It was run as a fundraiser for the county of Flagler County and also for the city of Palm Coast to support pickleball in both areas. There were players from 33 Florida locations outside of Flagler County and in fact, less than half the players were from Flagler County and Palm Coast. We had three other states represented and with one participant from Canada, you could even say we had an international pickleball tournament. But first I'd like to show you a short video that one of our players, Lee David, put together about our tournament.
Lee, do you want to stand up? No. My name is Walt Hooker. I'm a pickleball ambassador from the USA Pickleball Association here in Flagler County, Florida. This weekend, we're having the Hammock Cup Pickleball Tournament here in Palm Coast at Holland Park. We have 150 players over two days. We had men and women's doubles on Friday, we're having mixed doubles today on Saturday. We'll be here till about 6 o'clock tonight. Putting together any kind of tournament, whether it's pickleball or any other sport, is quite complex. There's many pieces to the machine that are all moving at the same time. We have to get players registered, we have people that get hurt, get sick, have to drop out, so you have to make changes in brackets. You have to go out and get sponsors, you have to get food, you have to get raffle prizes. There's quite a bit involved in running a tournament. There's a lot of different aspects to it. The city was very helpful. When I came to them asking for a facility where we could have the tournament because we had a need for more courts than we had last year, they were very welcoming. They have their senior games here on these very same courts. And I took a look at them and I said, "Okay, that will work for us." They normally have six courts, but I needed eight. They allowed me to tape the courts that I needed. So they were very supportive. We also have a lot of equipment. We have tables and chairs from them that they donated, toiletto shoes, they had sandbags here for us, they have, some of the nets that we're using are from the city. We have people that have their own nets and we're using some of them as well. Mayor Melissa Holland is very supportive of pickleball and as a matter of fact, she is a pickleball player. The chair of the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioner Hanson, he's very much aware of pickleball. He's working to get us more pickleball courts. Alex Boyer, who is the city Parks and Rec Director, he is actively pursuing plans to get more pickleball courts here in Flagler County and specifically in Palm Coast. It's a very explosive sport, very fast-growing. Five years ago, in all of Flagler County, no one played pickleball. Now we have hundreds of players playing pickleball, we have over 25 courts, and it's really blossoming here in Flagler County.
Another person who's been instrumental in developing pickleball in Flagler County is Frank Barbouille. He's the Parks and Rec Manager for the county and even though pickleball is a small part of what he oversees, he's been active in improving the facilities. In addition, Frank has also allowed us to have weekly mini-tournaments that we started in January. We went from one a week to two a week now in promoting pickleball and we have over 50 players that come every week to play.
One of the ideas that Commissioner Hanson has is to create a world-class pickleball center to host tournaments here in Flagler County. So we're looking forward to having more courts that we personally can play on, on a daily basis, but it would also be nice to have tournaments that would bring more people into the county. They could play golf, they could go to the beach, they can play tennis, they can play pickleball. There's a lot of activities here. There's bike paths, there's walking paths, there's 27 parks and preserves in the county that people could visit. There's a farm museum that I've been to that is really, really interesting.
I would like to thank our tournament volunteers in the audience and ask them to stand along with everyone else that played in the tournament and those that play locally, so why don't you all stand up? Many helped not only during the tournament, but also measuring, taping the courts, setting up everything in the mornings, taking everything down in the evenings, and even picking up donated snacks and water from Publix the night before of each of the day's events. One in particular that you may recognize from the video is my wife, Roberta. She always has a smile on her face, except when I'm talking to her. Organizing and running the tournament would not have been possible without her support. She kept the tournament desk running very smoothly and very well organized. Last year, at the tournament, which was over at the Hammock Community Center, we had 80 players playing on three permanent courts. At that time, it was the largest pickleball tournament in Flagler County and after the tournament, we gave a check to the county for over $2,600 as a donation. Anticipating growth in turnout, this year we needed to move our pickleball tournament to a larger venue and selected the James F. Holland Memorial Park here in Palm Coast. We had 150 registered players, ages from 37 to 83. We used the three tennis courts and we converted them into eight pickleball courts using portable nets that you saw in the video. I believe this was the largest tournament in Florida north of Daytona Beach and one of the Flagler County Commissioners said in south of St. Augustine. And I said, "No, south of the state line." Even though Jacksonville has over a million people, I believe our tournament was bigger than any tournament they've had. So that's just right here in little old Palm Coast. We would also like to thank you, the board, the mayor, Alex Boyer and Brandon Washington who are standing behind me, and others for supporting pickleball in Palm Coast. I would also like to thank you, Mayor Holland, for coming to watch our tournament firsthand on Saturday morning. As I understand it, you have permanent courts on the way for Holland and Ralph Carter Parks, but I would ask you to consider instead concentrating pickleball courts in one location like you have at the tennis center where you have 10 tennis courts. And you can use that for tournaments and a variety of activities, whether it's teaching, clinics, small leagues, but you can't do that with two courts here and two courts other places. There are many tournament-level pickleball players throughout Florida and beyond. Imagine the local impact of significant tournaments here in Palm Coast like the USTA tournaments at the tennis center. If you build more courts, the players will come and the county has certainly discovered that. And I was talking with councilmember Clufus before the meeting and he said, where he lives, they are very overcrowded with just two courts. So it's magnified wherever you go. There's many other places with similar situations. The US Open in Naples that was held last month drew 2,000 players from, I think it was 22 countries around the world. So it wasn't just us in Canada. That was up from 700 players they had two years ago when they first opened. So they went from 700 to 1,200 to 2,000 in two years. They have 50 courts in one location at their East Naples Community Center and they put in, I think, 10 more last year to get up to the 50. With 10 to 12 courts, you could have a two-day tournament in Palm Coast with probably over 200 players. From what I saw at the Hammock Cup, Holland Park would be a cost-effective location for pickleball tournaments and everyday play for clinics and local players. With county approval, a single afternoon, noon mini-tournament or ladder league was started in January on three of the three courts at the Hammock Community Center. We had 34 players and averaged 26 players every week for eight weeks. It was expanded to two afternoon ladder leagues in April and now we have 56 players averaging 48 players each week. And that's in spite of many snowbirds already returning up north where it's maybe drier and not as wet. The Hammock Community Center pickleball courts are busy seven mornings a week from 8:30 till past noon time. In the afternoons, you'll find players there on a regular basis on four of the weekdays, plus players the other three afternoons as well. Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, we have usually 30 players waiting for the three courts. Two weeks ago, Sylvia Whitehouse... Sylvia, would you like to? I'll get to more about her in a second. She's the other USA pickleball ambassador in Flagler County and she hosted a well-attended introduction to pickleball. It was a demonstration and presentation at the Hammock Community Association meeting beginning of this month. She was a gold medal winner at the US Open in the 4.5 skill level, 50 to 54 age group in women's doubles. So she knows what she speaks of when she teaches pickleball because she's now a 5-0 player. We also, we also have another gold medal winner from the US Open. Go ahead, stand up Doug. And we have other players that played in the US Open and won other medals, but those were the two gold medal winners. Jay? Did I miss you, Jay? Okay, Jay, stand up. Kathy? I looked last night and I thought I got them all. Let's see, where are we? Sylvia and I also conduct free pickleball clinics at Holland Park twice a month and usually for the novice players. And also, Mayor Holland has not been one of our attendees, at least not yet. We hope that she might get you, the board members, out on the pickleball court to try this sport out. You saw it in the video, but this is the pickleball and the pickleball, a pickleball paddle. And there goes the check. Thanks, Brandon. In addition to your eight public pickleball courts in Palm Coast, there are five more courts in Flagler County and there's also 16 private courts in various gated communities. That's nearly 30 pickleball courts with hundreds of players in various gated communities. And the city and the county, little less than five and a half years ago, there was no pickleball in the whole area. So all of this is just to demonstrate the explosive growth of pickleball just right here locally. The explosion and the popularity of pickleball increased over 12% last year. About 1% of the entire US population plays pickleball. The Sports and Fitness Industry Association reported 2.8 million players last year that played pickleball and approximately 75% of them are over 55. But that also means that 25% are younger than 55. So it's not really an old folks' sport. Or as we say, sometimes pickleball is a sport for the mature tennis player who has so many injuries that they find pickleball is easier on the body. Who knows where pickleball is headed in the next few years, in Florida, here in Palm Coast, or even in the country? I would now like to present you with a check for $1,000 from our fundraising tournament to support pickleball in Palm Coast. Last week, I presented a similar check to the county commissioners. The total donation was over $2,100 for both... courts in Flagler County, and there's also 16 private courts in various gated communities. That's nearly 30 pickleball courts with hundreds of players in various gated communities and the city and the county. Little less than five and a half years ago, there was no pickleball in the whole area. So, all of this is just to demonstrate the explosive growth of pickleball just right here locally. The explosion and the popularity of pickleball increased over 12% last year. About 1% of the entire U.S. population plays pickleball. The Sports and Fitness Industry Association reported 2.8 million players last year that played pickleball, and approximately 75% of them are over 55. But that also means that 25% are younger than 55. So, it's not really an old folks' sport. Or, as we say, sometimes pickleball is a sport for the mature tennis player who has so many injuries that they find pickleball is easier on the body. Who knows where pickleball is headed in the next few years, in Florida, here in Palm Coast, or even in the country? I would now like to present you with a check for $1,000 from our fundraising tournament to support pickleball in Palm Coast. Last week, I presented a similar check to the county commissioners. The total donation was over $2,100 for both you and the county. Thank you very much.
I'll keep this kind of short, but pickleball is a growing sport in America, especially in this county, as you can see with all the individuals here today. Us in Parks and Recreation Department, we've been trying to grow pickleball as much as possible, so we introduced a ladder league, some beginner pickleball courses, and then they've really take on recently. So, we appreciate people like Walt that are very enthusiastic about the sport and want to help us out so that we can further the sport here in Palm Coast and also in the surrounding areas as well.
And you want to add, I mean, this is for all levels, too.
Correct.
So, I mean, we have beginners that can come out and play, all ages. We do have a very competitive group that has been playing for a while, but I would encourage anyone who's just looking to get active. It's an easy sport to learn, but it's one that's fun and adds a lot of value, so.
Just a pick and stick.
Just a pick and stick.
$1,000. It's hitting the ball.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to try to...
Three, two, one. The underhand serve, the double bounce over and back, and the kitchen.
You want me to give you a picture?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we can do it.
Wait, are you guys in the kitchen or not in the kitchen?
I'm going to stand over here and do this one first, and I'm going to get the row. One, two, three. One, two, three. What a healthy-looking bunch.
All right, keep smiling.
I snap on the pickleball courts.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. We're going to get one more. One, two, three. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't give it according. Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for liking this.
Okay. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Five, which is an ordinance.
Counsel, this is an ordinance of the City of Council, the City of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the City of Palm Coast Land Development Code to adopt Airport Area Economic Development Center of Regulations. This ordinance provides for implementing actions for legislative findings and intent. It provides for severability codification for conflicts and for an effective date. This is the second reading, Mayor, and this is a legislative matter.
Mayor, City Council, as City Attorney indicated, this is the second reading. It's a housekeep uniting. It just updates our master plan around the airport to make it very clear that the area along State Road 100, between State Road 100 and the airport, we do not consider high-quality wetlands, so they have to just meet the standard state and federal regulations for wetlands. That's all this ordinance does.
Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Five, please do so at this time. None, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Six is an ordinance.
Mayor, Counsel, this is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in Section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code. This ordinance amends the official zoning map for .41 more or less acres, so certain real property described as text parcel ID number 711317016000200010. This property is located at 40 Colchester Lane, and is more particularly described in Exhibit A attached to the ordinance. It's rezoning from multifamily residential 1, or MFR 1, to single-family residential SFR 1 zoning district. This ordinance provides for conflicts, for severability, and provides for an effective date. Mayor, Counsel, this is the second reading of a quasi-judicial matter, so if there have been any ex parte communications since the reading, this is the first hearing of this ordinance, those should be disclosed at this time.
Counsel, any quasi-judicial?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to have to declare a conflict of interest on this matter, and I'll file the appropriate papers with the City Clerk's Office.
Okay.
Not participate in any further discussion on it.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, this is the second reading of this rezoning. This is a property that was the residual from when the city purchased the Long Creek Nature Preserve Park. This is a property located right on Colchester. When it was a large parcel, multifamily might have made sense, but right now, they're proposing to make it single-family, which is much more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Everything else in the area is single-family. There hasn't been any other issues or concerns brought to us since the last reading, the first reading. We believe this is ready for final action.
Counsel, any discussion or questions on this item? I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Six, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously with the disclosure noted, so for... Virginia, you have that on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven is a resolution approving the First Amendment and Restatement of the Existing Easement Agreement with Dune CDD and approving the purchase of materials and related expenses for the Palm Harbor Parkway Landscape Improvements.
Mayor, City Council, this is a project that's been on our capital improvement plan now for the second year. It's had some... We've had some delays. It is in two phases. The first phase, we're proposing, is just the landscaping of the median in Palm Harbor at the intersection of the entrance into European Village and also the entrance into our trailhead underneath the bridge over the intercoastal. The bridge area and the land underneath the bridge is actually owned by the Dune CDD, so... And our agreement with them is any improvements that we make needs their approval, and the Easement accomplishes that. And this CDD, Dune CDD Board of Directors has approved this and are supportive of the idea. We are only proposing at this time the first phase. The second phase in the future would be additional parking. That's also part of this Easement Amendment, so the Dune CDD Board has approved that second phase, but that is... Doesn't have any kind of timeframe. Right now, we're just proposing the landscape improvements. So, there's really two things in this resolution. First would be approval of the amendment to the Easement, which all the details have been taken care of, and staff is recommending that you approve the Easement Amendment. The second one is approving the actual landscaping project. We're estimating approximately $50,000 to complete this project. During the workshop, there were some concerns about is the timing right to move forward with this, particularly since we have not received reimbursement from FEMA on Hurricane Matthews in Irma. I can give you a little update on that. FEMA has actually released to the state $1.3 million for us, and it's in the final stages of review at the state level. We've been... We're in contact with them weekly, and at this point, they're saying that's going to happen sometime very soon. So, our first payment for Matthew is expected any time now, $1.3 million. Ultimately, we're expecting for the two closer to $5 million. So, right now, we are recommending that you move forward with Easement and the landscaping project.
Counsel, any discussion or questions? I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously with the disclosure noted, so for... Virginia, you have that on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven is a resolution approving the First Amendment and Restatement of the Existing Easement Agreement with Dune CDD and approving the purchase of materials and related expenses for the Palm Harbor Parkway Landscape Improvements.
Mayor, City Council, this is a project that's been on our capital improvement plan now for the second year. It's had some... We've had some delays. It is in two phases. The first phase, we're proposing, is just the landscaping of the median in Palm Harbor at the intersection of the entrance into European Village and also the entrance into our trailhead underneath the bridge over the intercoastal. The bridge area and the land underneath the bridge is actually owned by the Dune CDD, so... And our agreement with them is any improvements that we make needs their approval, and the Easement accomplishes that. And this CDD, Dune CDD Board of Directors has approved this and are supportive of the idea. We are only proposing at this time the first phase. The second phase in the future would be additional parking. That's also part of this Easement Amendment, so the Dune CDD Board has approved that second phase, but that is... Doesn't have any kind of timeframe. Right now, we're just proposing the landscape improvements. So, there's really two things in this resolution. First would be approval of the amendment to the Easement, which all the details have been taken care of, and staff is recommending that you approve the Easement Amendment. The second one is approving the actual landscaping project. We're estimating approximately $50,000 to complete this project. During the workshop, there were some concerns about is the timing right to move forward with this, particularly since we have not received reimbursement from FEMA on Hurricane Matthews in Irma. I can give you a little update on that. FEMA has actually released to the state $1.3 million for us, and it's in the final stages of review at the state level. We've been... We're in contact with them weekly, and at this point, they're saying that's going to happen sometime very soon. So, our first payment for Matthew is expected any time now, $1.3 million. Ultimately, we're expecting for the two closer to $5 million. So, right now, we are recommending that you move forward with Easement and the landscaping project.
Counsel, any discussion or questions? I'll open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Seven, please do so at this time.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I would suggest that we go ahead with that when we get some of the money from FEMA. Bird in the hand is a whole lot better. Let's get... Let's get some of that money instead of saying, "Oh, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming," and then we spending on something that can actually be delayed. We delayed it this far, let's delay it a little bit longer until we get the FEMA... Actually get the FEMA money in our coffers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a move for approval for approving the First Amendment and the Restatement of the Existing Easement Agreement.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously.
Mayor, any clarification? Did that include the project?
I'm sorry. Yes, and the approval of... So, I should make another motion.
I think...
I'm sorry. I knew there's two components.
Right.
Approval of First Amendment and Restatement of the Existing Easement Agreement and the purchase... Approval of purchase of materials related expenses for the Palm Harbor Landscape Improvements.
May I be my recommendation, since you've already made the motion, it's been seconded and voted on? I think it'd be simple to just go ahead and make a supplemental motion and take action on the second part of it, consistent with the council member's clarification just stated.
Understood. Yes, I would like to make a supplemental motion for the approval of purchase of materials related expenses for the Palm Harbor Parkway Landscape Improvements.
Is there a second?
Is there...
You can second it for discussion if you want.
Yeah. For discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it for discussion. I admit my original second, I thought I was seconding a motion just to approve the Easement Agreement, but I would like to talk about the appropriation as well, so. I'll second.
Is there a reason at this point that we're not waiting till the money comes to us and then doing it?
Well, from a financial standpoint, it's really... We're not waiting for the money for this capital project. This money is in the bank. This money is in the budget. It is... What we talked about last time, if you recall, there's two funds that will be reimbursed once we get the FEMA dollars. One is just adding to our ending fund balance in the general fund, and the other one is our natural disaster or disaster fund. These dollars are coming out of our capital fund. So, the dollars are there. If... I think the point was is, you know, you can always shift those dollars to someplace else if they're needed in the future. Tell you the truth, $50,000 when it comes to a hurricane is not a major deal. This project has, you know, already been delayed, so, you know, it's... If you want to wait until we get the $1.3 million, you can actually make that motion too, if you like. As far as cash flow, we do not need the $1.3 million, and we're not counting on that $1.3 million to pay for this project.
And if I could... Last week, my point really was not, like Mr. Cuff said, it wasn't picking on this project. It was more of a global statement that maybe projects like this... Because you're right, I mean, $49,000 isn't going to make a difference either way.
Right.
But just a thought in the future of maybe if we have some of these right now, if we look at them and we know they're coming up in the next months, maybe we can push them off a little until we get some of the dollars, but I didn't want to pick on this particular...
Right.
I mean, I just brought it up for that, you know, so we look at it globally more.
And projects are in the millions or even hundreds of thousands are the ones that will really have more impact, you know?
I would hate to sour the relationship with the Dune CDD as well. I know that it's been back and forth a couple of times with them, and now that we've said we're going to move forward with it, I just don't want to be that guy as the city that says, "Okay, we had a deal, but..."
If I could add to that, European Village is also a partner in this. I mean, they're not contributing to this, but they've made major improvements at European Village, and we've worked with them on a variety of improvements at their property, and this is one of the reasons why this came up, was how we could also show kind of a... More of a Palm Coast entrance into European Village, give it a better, let's say, curb appeal.
That's what the business owners have relayed to me. It's important to them as the gateway to their... By the way, European Village is looking so nice as it is, I'm excited, but...
This is really heavily utilized too by all the walkers and all the 5Ks that run by Waterside. They always come up that way, and right now, it's just kind of a vacant parking lot.
Okay, so we have a supplemental amendment discussion to that...
Seconded.
And a second.
Yeah.
Does your second stand?
Yes, and I just, for my two cents, as Mr. Nobile has said, I certainly think that if there's any further delays in the reimbursement from FEMA, that we do want to take a hard look at any discretionary spending. On the other hand, given the... To Mr. Kuplis's point, I'm somewhat familiar with the legal history of this area and the Dunes right away and the relationships between the city and the Dunes and European Village. And I would like to see it done, and I certainly would hope that $49,000 isn't going to make a significant difference in the city's emergencies, preparations for any future storms or other natural disasters, which we all hope we won't have. So, I would let my second stand, and I would urge approval of the expenditure.
Any other discussion on the supplemental motion? Okay, I'll call to order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number Eight, Nine, Ten, or Eleven? Please do so at this time.
Good morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. With Item Number Eight for fine for the waterway cleanup, I know with Mr. Nets here on the committee, was looking for property to be able to utilize for businesses should they need access to the waterway. Does this in any way have anything to do with this? Is this a separate subject? And are we still looking for property earnestly for the projects?
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on any of the consent agenda items? Please do so at this time.
John Nets, resident of Palm Coast and chairman of the Florida Inland Navigation District. To Mr. Mayo's comments, we are doing a study from the 12 counties, from Nassau County in the north to Miami-Dade in the south, because as there is more and more waterfront development, there is less and less opportunity for commercial operators to have access to the water. If you're rebuilding a seawall, putting in a dock, they have to have access. We did a study. We came up with a number of...
a significant difference in the city's emergencies, preparations for any future storms or other natural disasters, which we all hope we won't have. So I would let my second stand, and I would urge approval of the expenditure.
Any other discussion on the supplemental motion? Okay, I'll call to order. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to the consent agenda. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda Item Number 8, 9, 10, or 11? Please do so at this time. You can come up to the podium.
Morning, George Mayo, Palm Coast. With Item Number 8, for fine for the waterway cleanup, I know with Mr. Nets here on the committee, was looking for property to be able to utilize for businesses should they need access to the waterway. Does this in any way have anything to do with this? Is this a separate subject? And are we still looking for property earnestly for the projects?
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to make public comment on any of the consent agenda items? Please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. This is a separate issue, completely. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move through. Second?
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Now move to public participation. Any member of the public wish to make public comment on items not on the agenda? Please do so at this time.
John Nets, resident of Palm Coast and chairman of the Florida Inland Navigation District. To Mr. Mayo's comments, we are doing a study from the 12 counties, from Nassau County in the north to Miami-Dade in the south, because as there is more and more waterfront development, there is less and less opportunity for commercial operators to have access to the water. If you're rebuilding a seawall, putting in a dock, they have to have access. We did a study, we came up with a number of potential sites here in Flagler County where you could have commercial access. We didn't get a lot of positive feedback from any of the local governments, but I will point out that just recently, within the last week, FINE was contacted by a local property owner developer who has some interesting concepts about some sort of shared commercial, residential, recreational access. So there may be something coming in the future. Thank you.
Your comments. Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. When you ask people to get up at the consent agenda, let me take these things off the How can somebody make a comment on something on the consent agenda if they don't know what it's all about? People don't come to the work, workshops, and they don't, some people don't listen on television, but they come here, and then you ask them, "Make a statement on what's on the consent agenda." No, it should work the other way around. You make it, you make the statement, and then we'll make a comment on what to say. It's like anything else, like the other, if you're putting something on your agenda, you ask the public to speak. On the consent agenda, you are consenting without making anything. So if somebody comes up and says, "I don't know what's happening on 8," right? He can't tell you, "Well, this is what it is, this is what it ain't." You tell them this is what it is, and then they'll, they'll know what it's all about, and they can comment on it. So I think you're taking a lot of liberties away from the public on things like that.
Make your comments. Next speaker.
Yes, George Mayo, Palm Coast. Jack's kind of right. I wanted a little more explanation about what Article 8 was about, what kind of waterway cleanup, what that meant, what was, what it entailed. And you just said it was a separate entity from what Mr. Nets is looking for, but that still really didn't answer my question. The other two things I have are transportation-wise and traffic-wise. I was heading east on Palm Coast Parkway, looking to turn right onto Cypress Point to go over towards Lowe's, and traffic coming out of Boulder Rock had the green light and came across the road. The light was red to turn into Lowe's Walmart area, and traffic backed up completely across, oops, Palm Coast Parkway. So when Palm Coast Parkway's light turned green, it was completely blocked with traffic. I don't know if you, if it was a one-time deal, or you can look at the timing of the light to turn left and to, towards Lowe's and Walmart or whatever, but, you know, light was green and nobody could go anywhere because everybody just backed right up because everybody was looking to turn. The other intersection is at 100 and Old Kings Road South. I was leaving Winn-Dixie one day and going back to 100 to turn westbound on 100, take a, there's a left turn lane there. While school was getting out and people coming to pick up their children were going southbound in the left turn lane, which is for northbound. So there was no left turn lane in order for cars to turn onto 100. Also, there are cars backed up on 100 looking to turn onto Old Kings Road that were parents looking to go pick up their children. So now anybody who just wanted to drive on Old Kings Road South couldn't do so because the cars were blocking, they were waiting to pick up their children. I know that's always been a bottleneck, but there has to be a better solution than allowing, you know, something like that happen. When cars are in the northbound lane heading southbound, your cars pointed the wrong way across the double yellow line. So I would, hopefully, something can be done, whether a deputy can go out there in direct traffic, or talk to the school about letting children out at different times, but, you know, it could be a bad situation happening, so just, thank you.
Make your comments. Next speaker. Okay, I'll close public comment. Mr. Landon, I know historically with the schools, we coordinated with them. If that's happening, I would ask you to coordinate with the school district to rectify that. Sometimes they...
Yeah, we'll take a look. It's been a chronic problem, but I thought it was fixed, and they have a...
I drove by, what's the, Imagine the other day, and that, I don't know what we did there, but, or what they changed, but all the traffic's in the back of it now, instead of on Main Road.
That one has been fixed. I drive that quite often, and I haven't seen any problems this year at all. We'll take a look at Old Kings Elementary and see if it's an isolated situation or something unusual there, or if it's something that we need to work with the school district and the county and the state on that signal.
Okay, and I would also ask you to look at that light over at Cypress.
Yeah, that's all, that's an ongoing, it's just very difficult, but we'll take a look at it, make sure it wasn't an isolated incident. I always have to make, when we have the capability of doing that, you will have those isolated incidents when you have emergency vehicle that goes through that preempts the light. And then people say, "Whoa, this isn't working right," but it's just that one time, or is it cycling through? But we'll look at it. That one we constantly look at too. It's, the timing is very picky because you have so much traffic coming in and out, and those signals are so close together.
Okay, discussion by City Council of matters not on the agenda. I will start with Vice Mayor Cuff.
Okay, well, two, I hope, quick items. One is, I understand that the city delegation will be meeting with the county delegation on the issue of the airport commons, and I wish everyone luck. I'm sure our staff and representatives will be the voice of reason, and that this is something that we can resolve without having to constantly read about accusations back and forth in the press and so forth. So good luck on that. Second, I don't know if the city manager perhaps has an update on the Florida Park Drive utility repair, so I won't, other than to ask about that. And finally, to say goodbye, I guess, hopefully not goodbye, but I'll feed her saying to Mr. Nobel, and to thank him. I've enjoyed sitting next to him, and the thought of being the only bearded city council member, at least for the foreseeable future, is a daunting thought, so thank, thank you very much, Steve. And it's an understatement to say that you'll be missed.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Me? Okay, quick. So for those of you who don't know yet, this is my last day here, this is my last sitting. First thing I want to do is thank this council. They've done a great job, and like I stated in my, in my email to them, they're heroes in my, in my book, because they've stood up and have come to this council, and they're putting their money where their mouth is. They're not just sitting around talking about stuff, they're getting things done. And I wish them great prosperous moments in the future for Palm Coast. I know you're going to do good things. You all love this place like I do. I've been here 36 or 37 years. I can't believe I'm moving to a bigger place instead of a, I should be going to the mountains, but I'm going to a big city. So again, I wish you all great success in your lives and here on the council. To the staff, Palm Coast staff, and Mr. Reichman and Mr. Landon, I want to include them in there, you guys are the best. An organization I just have not experienced in many places at this level. You make this job very easy, you know, it just, all I have to do is show up and do what you tell me, you know, and I do question it sometimes, but it's very easy and it's very helpful to know that everyone here, from, from every level of employment and position, is, they're just loyal, and they love the city, and they do their job well, they're well-organized, they're well-managed, and I wish all of you the same, prosperous and, you know, hopefully eventless, but happy times in the future. And to the residents, I just want to thank all of you, all three of you here? No. So all, all listening, that I've been proud to be your representative, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity. I love the fact that I got to live here for 37 years, and this was my going-away position, because this is, I consider, one of my most cherished positions. To serve the people that are close to you, you know, in your own town, is very important. So I wish everyone a long, happy, successful, healthy life. Goodbye.
Thank you. Your comments.
I as well wish you the best of luck in the future, and I hope everything works out, and may the sun always be at your face and the wind at your back, and good luck.
Thank you.
The second component that I had for discussions on the agenda also was related to Florida Park. I wasn't certain what the strategy is now with the rain, but on the other side of Florida Park over by Simron, I wasn't certain if we were planning to put out a sign now that said that there was going to be an extended blockage in the road. I had my mother-in-law ask me, she lives over on Simron, she went down Florida Park, and then she realized it was blocked off, and my response to her was she shouldn't be driving down Florida Park anyway, and she told me there should be a sign there, so. I told her I would ask, but those are my only two things. Thank you, Mayor.
Good welcome. Council membership, please.
Well, I'd also like to say goodbye to Mr. Nobel. I'm going to miss Angela and Dana much more, but I'm going to miss you too, and I'm glad I got time to work with you.
Thanks.
And other than that...
Yeah, I too share in everyone's remarks. I will say, you know, it's sometimes easy when you're sitting in the audience and not realizing that this is not an easy job. It's a big responsibility, one that not many have stepped up to do. So you are amongst the minority in this country by public service and certainly local government having a very large impact. So I think your time in Palm Coast and your now departure will have left a legacy. So I think you should take great pride in that with your future grandchildren as well, telling them the stories of your, your time here on the council.
There will be stories.
Yes. But I want to thank you for your service, and I want to thank you for your contribution to our community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
There's one other item, actually, so, you know, I've taken, there's two items. When I hear something in the community about our businesses and if we're holding up a permit, you know, I've really taken the stance that we're going to bring them into City Hall, we're going to have a discussion with our administration and departments that are inclusive in this discussion, and it's been very productive, so. But I had a thought, and one of it is, I'll use Moonrise Brewery as an example, you know, this is a couple that came and invested their life savings into our community to open up a microbrewery, and what I quickly realized is, you know, for someone that's a true entrepreneur, is not like a big box store that has several team members that can navigate their way through our codes and what's required of them, not only in estate code, but, but our local codes. And, you know, so I was thinking after the discussion, and they came in and they were very grateful for the time we spent, and there's a few other businesses that are similar. Once they spend time with us, we want to build that relationship, and I think it's one, we want our business community to be extremely successful, and our part, I think, needs to be one of support through this process. I'm not a business owner, but I can tell you, hearing the story of the weight of these barrels, and I would have no idea even how to navigate that. But I know other communities have looked at having an ombudsman role to help entrepreneurs that step into our City Hall and submit plans or submit drawings or whatever they're going to do to open up a business. They have an individual there that is a go-between to take them through the process step by step. And I thought it might be appropriate when we're talking about entrepreneurship and how we're moving into this next phase of innovation and securing that, that we look at a role in that regard. Because I do think there's, there's a gap that when they step into our City Hall, we have the Business Assistance Center, that we should be handing them all the information that we have to offer them. I know that it's there, and I know we have an office there, but it seems like there's some steps that aren't necessarily controlled efficiently, and I'd like to see us change that. So, you know, I think if...
You're absolutely correct. And I think your analogy to a big box store, they have people dedicated to this, you know, and to go into business in any city, you get this, here's the codes, and you're like, okay, first of all, 90% of this doesn't apply to me. How do I find what applies to me? And you're right, if we, if somebody was there who could say to them, "Okay, you're opening this kind of business, you're going to have these kind of issues, I can take you right to the codes and right to the place you need to be to get what you need done." Yeah, that makes great sense.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm hoping if we get support on this council, that staff can look at coming back to us with at least an answer or a position that you would recommend to do that. And again, this really is about the entrepreneurs, because, you know, this is our first microbrewery, so I think also, you know, it's one that we're hoping to establish that, that spirit. But talking to these, this young couple really was, I don't know, it was very moving for me to see that they've invested in our community, and we should equally invest in them. And, you know, again, I think by doing that demonstrates that Palm Coast is entrepreneurial spirit is strong, and it's, it's one that we really want to cultivate.
And by the way, they've moved into European Village, which is consistent with what we just talked about earlier too, so.
It's a, it's a success story, but, you know, we've had a few in there, and one of them's like, you know, a small pharmacy, and not the typical pharmacy, and they're like, "Well, you know, we didn't know." And the pharmacist was like, "Listen, I prescribe drugs, I don't, you know." So it is a bit confusing to navigate through.
And the time is immense. I mean, you know, just opening a little manufacturing, little, I'm talking small. You know, it's, we're hoping that starts coming here, you know, the very light type of, and, and it's, they don't have their, their family, you know, they, they've got all their money, they've got all their business knowledge, and they get held up, because do I have to read this to understand what I need to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and most of the time, you know, I wouldn't even know what, you know, I've opened so many businesses, and every city's different, and, you know, but there have been many cases where I had to hire somebody, and that's, that's rough, because I did not take that into consideration, that I'm going to have to hire somebody to navigate me through the business, the government layer.
And that's what they said. They said they needed an engineer, and they had just no idea. So I just thought, maybe it's appropriate time to do this.
So is this something like a general contractor? Or something, I mean, the BAC, I know what they do, is this not something that they would handle? Are you looking for someone that works for us?
The BAC is a consultant advisor on marketing strategies and financial applications, and, yeah, more of understanding a small business role and helping them succeed. This really is much more technical in nature.
A liaison type of...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just somebody who sits in, sits downstairs and says, you know, this is, who can look at, this is the type of business he's trying to open, and knows what you need to know, you know, and so you don't have to read, you know, the code.
Intimidating.
It is, yeah.
Bob, did you want to add?
No, I think it's a good, the only thing I was thinking of is, you know, you mentioned the term ombudsman, and to me, that has implications of you've got a problem, you know, and you need to go to a third party who works, you know. I mean, to my way of thinking, it would be much more of a facilitator, somebody that can look at the incoming business and say, "You need this, 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 and this." I do think, obviously, that person or people would have to be conversant in things like contracting, engineering. On the other hand, I also think we need to avoid getting too ahead with expectations. I mean, I don't, I don't think what your...
I mean, I don't think what you're proposing is that we have a staff of engineers that draw plans for private businesses and so on, but certainly having city staff that are trained and available to sit down with folks like the Moonrise people and guide them through the process rather than just handing them a big...
And that's the key, available, you know? Because we have staff with the knowledge. And you can't spend all that time...
Yeah, and I think a lot of the staff does a very good job of that. I mean, I tend to hit the land use end more than some other areas, given what I do for a living, and I know the planning staff can be very helpful, but having someone whose job it is, I guess, to sort of synthesize all the different areas of the city's departments for someone who's looking for...
Yeah, because I didn't even know that we had a Business Assistance Center. So Ray was in the room and he was able to give them their information, and he was like, oh my God, this is amazing. So it's, and it's really no reflection on our staff. The fact of the matter is we're growing again, so our planning department is getting very busy again, and they're there to review the plans, to make sure, but to not have that, you know, I'll use it maybe on a technology application of that middleware that connects the two, I think would just be appropriate, especially with the strategies that this council has laid out with our next stages and the hopes of really developing these unique strategies. So I just think it's missing somewhere. It's, there's that component.
A step missing.
Yeah, and I mean, I, again, I love business owners. I think there's nothing more American, if you will, than saving up your money and opening up a business, and I want really us to support that strongly. So if you can bring back some thoughts and offerings, then I think that would be appropriate.
We'll put together a team approach and try to hit the target.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing, I know we do have our meeting today with the county, and I am going in very positive to represent our discussion and dialogue that we've had thus far, and my hope is that we can come to a resolution and move forward collaboratively. So, okay, discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Councilmember Nobiel, it's been a privilege working with you and working for you. I wish you the best. Personal note, my wife and I relocated, moved from a home we'd been in for 27 years a couple of years ago, and it was stressful and it was sad, but it has been an adventure. And I wish you a similar adventure in your, in safe travels. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion by city manager.
Yes, let me start with the Florida Park Drive issue. For, people may not know, the reason Florida Park Drive is closed is because we had a sewer line that collapsed on us, so it was emergency repair, and we had to dig up the street, it was underneath the street. The repair has been completed, the sewer is working fine now, and crews are ready to move out, but with all the rain, you can't pave on top of saturated soil, and so we have to let it dry out. So right now, it's, as soon as it dries out, the hole that was dug, the patch, we'll get a paving crew in there to pave it. We really don't recommend opening it with just a base or something, you know, with it being this wet, it's going to cause problems for neighbors and cars, so we're going to wait to open it back up when we can pave it. So that's the status of that, and we'll get it finished as quickly as we can. The good news is the sewer is back to normal. We had to divert the sewer, but it's, everything's back to normal there. Couple of events coming up, need to make sure it's on your calendar. Today is Food Truck Tuesday here at Central Park. If the weather holds, it's a big if right now, they're going to make a decision around noon as to whether they're going to call off the trucks from coming in. So people who are interested in Food Truck Tuesday needs to kind of stay tuned on our website, we'll do some social media. Also, Memorial Day weekend is coming up, Monday, the 28th, I believe it is. Yes, 28th at 8:00 a.m., we have our annual Memorial Day ceremony out at Heroes Park. So those that people are in town, hopefully they can come out to Heroes Park on Monday, the 28th at 8:00 a.m. The other thing, just keep in mind, and we haven't made any decisions as to whether what we're going to do from a staff level, but we'll bring something back to you with a recommendation, is your first meeting in July, it's a business meeting, is July 3rd. So that's your evening meeting. That's also our fireworks night. So having people try to come to the meeting and navigate fireworks and 4th of July ceremony, we aren't recommending. So we're trying to figure out if rescheduling or if we can cancel that meeting. So that's just kind of a FYI for you that July 3rd, we may have to cancel because of 4th of July. And then lastly, is stay tuned for the wastewater treatment plant number two ceremony coming up here in June. Mayor, that's all I have.
Wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Move we adjourn.